The regular monthly meeting, the organizational meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I want to thank so many people for coming out on a, well, it's not cold, but it's a winter night nonetheless, and it's always great to see a little bit of interest in our community and applications like the one on our agenda tonight and other matters before the planning commission. Unfortunately, you've come tonight, though we have our organizational meeting, which I don't think will take long, so you get the excitement of local government at work. We're going to select our chairman for the coming year, vice chairman, and our Freedom of Information Act officer, and also adopt our meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-two. So I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to serve as chair this past year. I really enjoyed it. And with that, I will hand it off to Michelle Summers, who will walk us through the election of officers.
First up is nominations for chairman. Do you like to make any?
I'd like to nominate Kier Whitten.
Second, Matt.
Any other nominations?
Guess that's my proclamation. Okay, well, hello, everyone again. Thank you. I don't know that we need to vote.
I think we do need to vote.
Go ahead and do the roll.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Light.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Kohler.
Aye.
Ms. Ishi.
Aye.
Mr. Shulman.
Aye.
Ms. Ritter.
Aye.
No abstain. I think it's my proclamation or any other people on the slide. I'll nominate Gary Light as vice chair.
Second.
Anyone else? Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Light.
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
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 All right, thank you. Foya officer, Ms. Summers, who has been served as our FOIA officer?
County administrator.
Okay, I will put forward a motion that our county administrator served as the planning commission's FOIA officer.
Mr. Whitson, can I just raise a question on that point? I think our rules of procedure state that the FOIA officer will be the county administrator. Do we need to have a vote on that?
Let's just go ahead and vote on it. There was some wrinkle last year.
I'll second that.
Thanks. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. All right, that wasn't too painful. So, thank you for your patience.
Could I also say thank you to Mr. Whitson, Mr. Light, for continuing on as chair and vice chair. Much appreciate your going to take on that role.
Thanks.
Second.
Thank you for the opportunity. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion?
Actually, one question. Are we gonna do the minutes? Are we gonna do minutes?
We deny. To adopt the meeting schedule.
Oh, you're right. I apologize for that. Okay, could you just walk us through what's on there and what the resolution states? I think the main issue is inclement weather.
Incliment weather.
Okay. Sorry about that. We're almost finished. So it's basically the...
If there's inclement weather, the meeting will be continued until the following Monday.
Okay. And the meetings still remain on Wednesday, which is at the third Wednesday of every month?
The third Wednesday of every month at seven o'clock.
Okay, great. A motion to adopt the meeting schedule and resolution, laying it out.
I just want to make sure we meet Monday and not following Wednesday. Is that...
The following Wednesday would be a Wednesday.
Right. Okay, fine. Maybe that was a cut in case.
Okay, motion. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kohler. Mr. Light, any discussion?
Just, and I'm not really sure it's necessary, but just to point out that this is also in our rules of procedure, it's section three point two, so we could reference the rules of procedure, just so there's no confusion, right after, on the second line, when it's pursuant to that section of the code, just add "and" section three point two, three dash two, excuse me, of the Rappahannock, of the rules of procedure of the planning commission.
Okay. Are you just making that edit to the resolution as it was presented?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got a question.
Okay.
September fourteenth is the second Tuesday?
Good catch.
Just a question.
Yep, let me look. Yep, that's right. Good catch. Should that be changed to the twenty-first? Okay, thank you. Good catch, Brian. Thank you. Okay, so we're changing the September meeting date to the twenty-first, and then Ms. Ishi is adding a reference to our rules of procedure. Would you just say very clearly where you're adding that?
Yeah, so on line two, after the Code of Virginia, add "and" section three dash two of the rules of procedure of the planning commission.
Okay. Mr. Light, you made the motion, right?
Yeah, I'll move it again.
Okay. Second was Mr. Kohler, I think.
Oh, second.
You're okay with those changes? Great. Any further discussion? Thank you for your attention to detail, everyone. Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Henry?
Yep.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
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 All right, thank you. Now we're finished.
We're finished with that part.
All right, so now we will adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I so move.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ritter.
Second.
Mr. Kohler, second. Any discussion?
I don't think we have the minutes for anyone.
Okay, right. You want to strike that?
Yes, I suggest we strike that.
Okay, Ms. Ritter, we're gonna strike adoption of the minutes?
Yeah, I accept the minute.
Okay, Mr. Kohler, you... All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you. Next on our agenda, finally, to the meat of things, is a public hearing regarding special use permit number twenty-one dash twelve dash zero-two. This is Wagner regarding tax map number thirty-two dash fourteen D for a kennel slash dog training center. And we're going to turn, I know there's a lot of interest in this, and this is actually the fourth time we've had this discussion before the planning commission, including preliminary reviews and hearings, so we know there's a lot of interest. So one thing I want to clarify is that the definition kennel slash dog training center is an imprecise and slightly clumsy definition that comes from our zoning ordinance, so the application itself is for a dog training facility, and it does not contemplate a kennel operation. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Again, this definition here, kennel, is out of the zoning ordinance, but is not what the application seeks. In terms of time management, what I thought would be reasonable and fair for everyone, and we'll see how it goes, we can be flexible if we run way over time, but what I'd like for the applicant to do first is just to make an affirmative statement within the confines of your application. At that point, we'll open the public comment period of this public hearing and allow members of the public to speak. And members of public, whether for or against the application, you may comment on the application or anything the applicant says tonight, in addition to what's written in the application. Once we close the public comment period, then I would like to give the applicant a chance to respond to any additional comments that come up from members of the public. At that point, we'll just turn to members of the planning commission. And the end result of tonight's public hearing is we will vote on whether or not to move this on to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which handles special use permit applications, and we will vote either to move it on to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation for approval, with a recommendation for denial, or with no recommendation. So that's sort of the mechanics of how we hope this will go tonight. So with that, Ms. Wagner, if you'd like to just make an affirmative, I'm sorry.
If I may, I respectfully recuse on this...
Okay.
...if I have a business relationship.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kohler. So...
Chairman, I'm gonna do the same thing.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so Mr. Kohler and Mr. Henry are recusing themselves from the discussion. All right. Great. So, yep, you just maybe limit your comments to five or 10 minutes and then...
Oh, I can be shorter than that.
Okay, great.
We've done this a few times before.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Real quick, Michelle usually gives us a little rundown quick. Do we do that again before the public hearing?
Sure, yeah, good idea. Thank you. Man, I'm having a rough night.
Thanks. So as we know, Ms. Wagner has proposed a kennel dog training center for unit one seventy thirty-six E and one seventy sixty-six A for property located on Route two eleven beside Normada Winery. The parcel is in agricultural and it's twenty-two acres in size. The existing barn, which was gonna be rehabilitated, and you can address that, is not going to be rehabilitated. The, this will be indoor training space for small group classes and private one-on-one lessons. She does propose to construct a metal building on the property. Two yards will be fenced, one for outdoor agility, another as a dog park. Hours could vary between ten AM and eight PM, operating an average of forty to fifty hours per week, while we close on Sundays. Staff has recommended no overnight boarding or breeding of animals, compliance with all state and local ordinances. Pet waste is special shop applied guidelines outlined in USDA. Within one year of the issuance of this permit, an approved septic solution has been permitted installed and approved to include standard restroom facilities, by the health department, and compliance with the WOD layout as submitted as part of the application package. Ms. Whitson did submit a new layout design, and I will let her address that.
Yep.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
So I'm Charlotte Wagner. This is obviously my fourth time here. So I'm looking to build a training center. For the past ten years, I have lived here permanently in the area. I've had ties to Rappahannock for thirty years, and after doing brick and mortars, I decided to, it was time to have something for my clients that was ours, for us to kind of get together and train our dogs. So with this parcel, just to make some comparisons to the last one, it is a larger parcel, it's twenty-two acres instead of twelve. We very carefully thought about what you guys all said at prior meetings regarding, you know, road and traffic, regarding being somewhere near something that's commercial or by proxy to something that's commercial, and making sure that you have more of a buffer towards neighbors and like the surrounding area. So this parcel kind of lends itself ideally to that. Like Michelle said, we will be having one indoor training area that's gonna be a larger building, kind of like a horse arena. We'll have two outdoor fenced in yards. And then I did have somebody come to the property and look at the barn, and it turns out unfortunately that there's a lot of dry rot and insect damage. So the amount that it would cost to rehabilitate the barn, it'll actually be smarter that once we extend the road to where the parking lot is going to be, to actually get a prefabricated building as an office building, and we would be placing it that there instead. That, the measurements for that building would be a sixteen by forty, and that gives us enough time and space to actually start seeing clients if this all goes through while we start building the rest of the facilities.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Yep. One of the neighbors that joins the property, they did have the boundary surveyed, and they put a fence up, which is actually very helpful to me. So if you look, the layout is slightly different. We had to move things around because of the requirements of seventy-five feet for any kind of kennel structure to be from adjoining lots. I had to make sure that we arranged everything accordingly, so the structures are all still there, similar to on the original image, but they've been reconfigured. It's a hundred feet to the adjoining property to the neighbor where the fence is going up, and it's eighty feet from the Normada boundary line to the back of the building, so that we're well within that requirement. Yep, that's it. That's pretty much the update.
Yeah, and we'll probably save our questions still...
Sure.
After the public comment.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of this public hearing. If you wish to speak, just raise your hand and try to limit yourself to about five minutes, and we'll see how that goes. So would anyone like to speak? Okay, go ahead. And then when you come up, just state very clearly, just so we get a recording of your name and where you live, including the voting district, if you happen to know it.
I'm Janet Patterson. I live at twenty-six Cabin Lane. My husband, John Patterson. We did not receive a notice that this was coming in, and we butt up to this. Okay, so that's my first...
Okay.
...question. Okay, first of all, this is agricultural. You're gonna use a commercial use permit, and it's not going to bring in extra money for the county. It's not gonna be owner occupied. Why was this denied three months ago? My definition of a kennel and a shelter is breeding and boarding. Her proposed request states the training center kennel from ten AM to eight PM states forty to fifty hours. That totals up to sixty-six hours. Currently, it's tenant occupied, septic solution, a year after opening. Currently, the land promotes, you know, economic growth for the farmers, but now you want to take away the beauty of it? And where's the water gonna be coming from to provide for these animals? Who's gonna look after the animals at night? Are they gonna look after themselves? How many, what is it? Prairie County, ten dogs per acre? You got twenty-two acres? That's, normally, five dogs classified as a kennel. You gotta propose well for two thousand and twenty-three? Again, no water for the animals, no bathrooms for the people that are coming there? Fencing, trees, what size trees? Takes ten years for most trees. The waste disposal system breeds mold and fungus. You can't have this around anything for human consumption, makes people ill. Not only that, but the dogs. You have parasites in the dog poop. You know, if the animals ingest it or gets in our water, makes us sick. Oh, let's see, what else? This was, Canology was, the key principal owner was Leslie Schreiner. This was started in two thousand and seventeen. States it had five employees. The revenue for two thousand and seventeen was twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. The address is three ten Broadview Avenue. There's phone numbers for nine eight seven. There's also listed under Dust Land Dogs Farm. The address is the same in Warrenton. This was opened in August of two thousand and fourteen, closed two thousand and fifteen, November thirtieth, and it was automatically closed and cannot be reinstated. There's also a partner. Why isn't the partner on the sales contract? My husband and I have lived at Cabin Lane for twenty years. I came along five years later. I don't wanna listen to dogs barking. I'd like to be able to open up my doors and enjoy my pool in my backyard. I don't wanna have to worry about someone's dog getting out and biting one of my grandchildren. Also, my husband was diagnosed with liver cancer in two thousand and seventeen. After chemo, we had a liver transplant July thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. For the rest of his life, he has to be on anti-rejection medication. I can't have this around him and make him ill. We've had all shots and everything. So I just, I think that I don't want this in my backyard to make my husband ill and kill my husband after someone donated a liver to him. And we went for eight times to UVA before we got a good liver. So that's all my thing. It needs to go somewhere else. Not to mention, this property was subdivided in more lots than it was supposed to be. There's no maintenance on the road. There's also, at the back of this, is an entrance way that can go in off of Cabin Lane where my well is, that can poison my husband who's ill. So you all think about it. You wanna have this in your backyard? I don't think so. I mean, I understand she wants to train dogs. I understand that. What happens later on down the road? If you approve this and she wants to have a kennel, what do you have to go through to stop that? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume there's someone else who wants to speak? Go ahead.
I'm Chris Byrd, live in Hampton District. I've come here in support of Charlotte Wagner. I have used her services for helping me to train my dog, and I have been flabbergasted at the ability and art that she brings to dog training. And I would just like to encourage you to take her seriously and realize that she is who she is, she will do what she says, and she is a huge asset to this community. And all of us pretty much have dogs, and when there are problems and remediation needed, Charlotte would be the person to go to. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's so complicated.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Janet Davidson.
Could you go up to the microphone and say, thanks?
All right. My name's Janet Davidson. I own sixty-two Cabin Lane. I own the land that borders the land that Ms. Wagner is proposing to turn into a training center. I'd like to start off by saying that we don't question your professionalism. This is not personally against you at all. It's the idea of the business being on this piece of land in particular. I'm the one that sent the email to all of the board on behalf of all of the neighbors that we all had met between Christmas and New Year and discussed this. I have copies of the notes. I can read them all out if you want to go through them again. I'm sure you don't really need me to do that or want me to do that. What I've written down is, I am a firm believer of nothing ever stays the same. Change happens. If it didn't happen, none of us, none of this, none of us, none of this would exist. I'm not against change. However, the change proposed for this location is not the right kind of change, and the location is not the right kind of location for this business. As outlined in the email sent to all the board on Monday, there are multiple concerns from everybody closely affected by it, and as you can see from Janet's speech, they're very, we're very passionate about it, feel very strongly. This country has a rich, county has a rich agricultural heritage, farming, which helps to sustain us all and preserves the incredible natural beauty we are fortunate enough to be surrounded by. The proposed dog training center structures will detract from the natural beauty. Unlike wineries, it will not contribute anything to the agriculture or to the natural environment, and as I understand it, it will not add to the county's tax revenue. Instead, it will have a negative impact on all of the neighbors, as outlined in that document. There are other areas where it could be located, and I took some time to go through the county's comprehensive plan, and it talks about the commercial area. Why can it not be located in a commercial area? There's one question that we would like to have clarified. It did get mentioned in the document that I brought up, that on the website for Canology, it mentions boot camp, and if you look up the definition of boot camp, it's where you stay on site. And if this does go ahead, what's the ruling going to be on the boot camp? Is it going to be located there, or is it going to be located elsewhere? And is it an overnight situation? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Nicodemus. I live at eleven Cabin Lane. We all know why our neighbors don't want it and why some people don't want it. I've been to county for thirty-one years. I've been to this county because this county is all about the people, all about our land. I don't see this as bringing anything good to our county. I met Panda Patel when he planted his first grapes, and a lot of what we do in this county, Normada has helped with. People come to Normada, they come to Grey Ghost, they come and play nine holes at Schoolhouse Nine. They come to Rappahannock Pizza Kitchen to get a kitchen. They come to the inn. I don't see what somebody training a dog is and what it's gonna do to our landscape, what it's gonna do to Normada, and what it's gonna do to the people that have to come hear it, listen to it, smell it, that contribute to the people in the county that work here, that provide life for their family here. I don't see this as being a good thing. I ask that you take that into consideration for our county, for Rappahannock. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Alexander Dias, and I'm the tasting room manager over at Normada Winery. Felt like it was my turn to stand up and speak. Fortunately, Suda Patel cannot be here. She's the owner of Normada Winery, but she asked me to go ahead and come here and speak for all of us at the winery. And again, I've been with her for about twelve years now, and she trusts and knows that I'll be speaking well for her. I'd like to first start off to say that we love you and everything. She's been a wine club member with us for, off and on, for years, but after considering and looking over all the notes and everything, there has been some concerns and thoughts that have been brought up, a lot of which have already been said, including the runoff with the feces, how that can affect our grapes, our customers, any chances of anybody escaping. We do a lot of weddings, events, corporate things, where you can see that possibly going against, you know, just the beauty of the surroundings. I understand she's planning on planting trees, but that, again, could take ten, fifteen, twenty years. And with all that being said, the noise, again, with the events, the runoff, possibility of anything getting out, especially goats or anything that would possibly harm the vineyard or anything like that, the property in general. And yeah, so unfortunately, Suda is always excited for someone to pursue their dreams and get everything. That's why she was so excited here, that you were pushing for what you're going for, but after looking into it, unfortunately, the vote between me, her, and Jeremy, the other manager there, is maybe not the best place. So I think that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Paul Peretouris. My wife, we live on Cabin Lane. And again, nothing personal, when Ms. Wagner came to our house, she's very sharp. She's done her homework. She gives a great presentation, and I actually told her that it sounded like a good idea. And then I started talking with neighbors and giving it a little more thought. And I'm more concerned with what is not being said than what is being said. There were contradictions in what we were told, one of them being that Normada was all for it, one hundred percent, that there'd be a gate between the dog park and Normada, and that just wasn't true. The possibility of a road off Cabin Lane. I don't believe that twenty dogs a day can sustain a million dollar business. I don't see it. So my concern is what everyone is saying, but also, you know, once somebody's there, any of you gonna walk up there and check and make sure things are being done like they're supposed to? Would you want it next to you? It was proposed to buy a piece of land somewhere else, and I understand that it was declined because of the neighborhood, the neighbors. Well, we're just as important as those people. You know, we moved to Rappahannock for the beauty, for the country, for the smell, for the sky. It's beautiful out here. If that dog plays goes in, you're welcome to buy my house and live next to it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep. Thank you.
My name's Paul Brown. I live at one four 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 one Lee Highway. I'm not a, my property...
Anyone else? Yep, thank you.
My name's Paul Brown, I live at 14441 Lee Highway, I'm not a, my property is not directly adjacent to it, but if you sit on our back porch, we look directly at the property. I understand, I've heard what you said this evening about this not being an actual kennel, but I'm a businessman myself and I also know that you you always look to grow your business once you start and as you are in business, you may need to find other opportunities or other ways to be successful. I hear what you're saying about no overnight boarding, but a concern of mine is similar to what you've heard this evening is, once, if you do approve this permit, what's to stop that from happening? Once this does, if this does take place? There's no way to enforce it, I've lived here my whole life. I know that for a fact. A lot of times it takes a citizen having to do something legally themselves, if there is a complaint brought up, there's just no way for the county to enforce that. So that is a concern of mine. I did watch the YouTube video from last month and I understand that this was an appealing parcel to you guys because I guess Narmada is considered a commercial property next door. But in all honesty, it's more agricultural than it is commercial, in my opinion. And as far as the surrounding area, the winery fits, this training facility does not. So, those are my two concerns and that's it.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Dabney Kirchman, I live in Sperryville. I believe both my husband and I sent letters to you all, I'm not going to read those. I'm just going to address a couple of things that have been said. My, we met Charlotte in 2016 when we took our rescue dog to the vet and he, the dog couldn't be vetted and he needed care and with the veterinarians at Rose Hill Vet and Charlotte's help, we were able to get the dog to the point where he could receive this rescue dog who would have been put down, who was very much beloved by our family. We've also used her services since then with our new puppy and with our thirteen-year-old standard poodle. And as to the question of what boot camp is, we participated in boot camp, it's five hours a day, you go, she has, she was doing in public parks, you go, you spend five hours a day training, by the end of it, you're more tired than the dog is because it's exhausting. And the other, I wish I would have this next to me, I have twenty acres, if I could, if I could put this facility on the front ten acres of my property, I would, she has been such an asset to this community and such a, the service is so very important, especially when you live in a rural area and and people's do, you know, how many times have I encountered other people's loose dogs when I'm walking mine on a leash? And to have the tools that Charlotte has given me so that I don't fall and break my leg because this crazy dog is coming at me, so that neither dog gets hurt, so that we get safely to where we need to go. So, in a rural area, dog training is really important, is what I would say. And again, I have these two letters, you guys have read them, I'm not going to reiterate them, but we're very much in support, my whole family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Margie Nicodemus, I'm on 11 Cabin Lane. I have three dogs and I would love to be able to afford training. I personally have to do the best I can because the training is not cheap. And I have a rescue dog, I have rescue dogs, I have helped place rescue dogs, but it's not. Charlotte, I really like you, I enjoy talking to you, you are not completely honest with us, which we were a big fan of you, but then to find out that you weren't telling us everything is bothersome to me. And because people may like their dogs to be trained or because it's benefited them, your two people, we're a community that already has the aesthetics that we want, not to mention the fact that you will have access to Cabin Lane, which is already in disre, it's not in disrepair, but it needs a lot of repair. That is a lot of vehicles as it is coming up our lane, there is not a road maintenance agreement and are you going to take care of the lane with the additional traffic, which is a lot of traffic? And I don't, I don't even like hearing my own three dogs bark, much less do I want to hear upwards of possibly twenty dogs. So, while I want you to succeed and I want you to have a business, that's great. And one of the reasons that you were denied was because Chris Parrish was one of the ones that was against it because it was going near his house, but yet he has no problem selling his property to you to benefit him. But it's not benefiting, it's not benefiting us. So, I want you to succeed, I think all dogs need to be trained, but next to all of us is not it. And Narmada does a lot for the community, does a lot for agricultural. Dog park is not agricultural, and I know for three dogs, it can stink if I don't clean up once a week. And I clean up, I dispose of it to the best of my ability, but I know there's an environmental impact that I always worry about. So with twenty plus, thirty, forty, fifty dogs, there's no way, there's no way there's not going to be an environmental impact. I mean, cows make an environmental impact in the grand scheme of things, so dog feces is not it. But I just, again, I want you to succeed, I appreciate the fact that she's trained dogs, but that doesn't benefit any of us and the impact that her business will make on any of us.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of tonight's hearing. And Ms. Wagner, I wanted to invite you, if you wanted to respond or make any final comments about your application.
I'll come up here and say a few things and then probably Mike Brown may say a few things.
Okay.
So first of all, the boot camp, that's a good question, so our boot camp, kind of like Dabney was saying, it's actually a really fun program. It's for people who've already taken some of our classes. And we do one hour, it's normally from twelve to one o'clock, so people can do it during their lunch break. And we go five days in a row to different settings and different venues. And we basically practice the same skills, loose leash walking, sit down, stay, greeting people in five different environments. So their owners, A, are being held accountable every day for five days in a row. Plus, the dogs get to train in different environments and the owners learn how to adapt kind of their training method based on the challenges in those different environments. So it is called boot camp, yes, but there are not dogs boarded, the boot camp is strictly because we're kicking the owners' butts, kind of like they say at Lake Boot Camp, right? So that's the first thing. The other thing, somebody had brought up some type of a long history about my company and everything, I would like to, for the record, say that, yes, I've been a dog trainer and I have been, I have owned my companies myself since 2006. I started off in Rockville, Maryland, I actually volunteered and did assessments for puppy mill dogs and worked at the Montgomery County Humane Society as a volunteer in order to get into behavior cases, which has led me now to work with aggressive dogs, dangerous dogs, and all kinds of things. With that said, so my company, I moved to England and when I came back, I originally ran my operation as Duskland Dogs, Duskland is also the name of my show dogs. And our first brick and mortar was at 310 Broadview Avenue, right next to Mattress Warehouse and Enterprise. It was six hundred square feet of a crap hole, but it was fantastic and it was my first brick and mortar. As we, as we naturally grew, I decided to rebrand the company, I never closed a company, we kept the same clientele, a lot of them I've known now for over ten years with repeat dogs for training. I decided to rebrand the company because I didn't want to confuse people between my kennel dogs and what I was doing in the show ring, because I do show, you know, at least one weekend out of every month. So we rebranded to Caninology, we still work under the same EIN number, it's still under the same social security number. And then we went from 310 Broadview Avenue, we naturally grew to the basement of 54 East Lee Street in Warrington, where we were very happy for two years. And we were teaching group classes in the same style and capacity that we are now. But unfortunately, due to COVID, we had to let that space go, we were closed for three months completely. But we survived, which a lot of businesses didn't, but at that point, for the last year, I've been driving around, I put something like fifty thousand miles in my car a year, just going from appointment to appointment. And I kind of want to give my clients a home base, I want to give my community a home base. The people that you heard from today and the letters that you guys received were exclusively from clients just in Rappahannock County, and that wasn't even the full list. The demand is there. Now, so in question of like the company history, yes, I do have one employee, Leslie Schreiner, by the way, is a dog groomer that I've been friends with for the last ten years, she's never been involved in my business, nobody else has ever owned this business, I've been a sole proprietor the whole time, I have one employee. She's a full-time employee, her name is Melissa. Now, all these concerns, to clarify about Narmada. I had visited the neighbors initially and I had made my rounds before coming to you all at the last meeting. I gave them a copy of my business proposal, I gave them the layout and I wanted to be proactive and make sure that I was fully transparent and explained to them what I wanted to do and where I wanted to do it. The reason I love this lot is, number one, yes, okay, you can argue until the cows come home about how Rappahannock defines a winery, whether it's ag or whatever. But the reality is, is with the size of the facilities that they have and with the size of the parking lot alone, their business is double what my business can take, and on top of that, at least my people are sober. Guys, how many accidents have there been from people turning the wrong yard? Okay, 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 okay. On top of that, I do understand concerns regarding the soil samples and all those issues, sure. But if you look at the design, especially the updated design, my design actually has no buildings or dogs anywhere near where the grapevines are planted, which you can see on the Google Maps. So the other thing you have to consider, this is ag land. I have a, I have a horse, I'd love to get a couple more horses actually, and I've got some goats, I work with a local breeder. I have kept an area specifically for hay so that I can make hay for my animals and specifically for ag use, goats and horses. The ag land is being preserved as a twenty-two acre parcel, if you even look at that, I'm maybe using a fifth, maybe, you know, a little bit more than that of actual for the business use. So we are kind of keeping everything as far as possible, we're keeping it intact. So regarding that, I don't know what they're talking about access on Cabin Lane, we have never discussed or even entertained the idea of access on Cabin Lane. There is an existing road there, it has a designated driveway, we are extending it behind the silo to the parking lot. We have never said anything about Cabin Lane, I came to them as a courtesy. I understand Narmada changed their mind, the two times that I did see them, once when I dropped off the leaflet and once when I went to collect signatures, which some of these neighbors had signed in favor of the project previously. I had every impression that they were supportive of the endeavor, every interaction we had was supportive.
Please let her speak without interrupting, thanks.
I mean, that's all I have to add. There is a well with three spigots already on the property in terms of water and has excellent water flow.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. So with that, Mr. Brown, did you want to add anything?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, thank you for indulging me for just a moment. It seemed to me in listening to some of the speakers speak that there was a fundamental misunderstanding either of Ms. Wagner's application or the process here. It, I just urge the planning commission members to to return to the application materials. They are detailed, they are thorough, they encompass all aspects of what this application is about. And an example is what Ms. Wagner just alluded to, this the concern that was expressed, this is just one example, the concern expressed tonight that somehow there's going to be access to this property or business via Cabin Lane. That's not in the application materials. It's very clear, in fact, from your application materials and the letter from Randy Norris at VDOT, that the entrance is going to be off of 211, that's one of the attractive features of this property in connection with this proposal. I would also, again, I would also urge the planning commission members to bear in mind, as I know you will, that the, what the special use permit, ultimately, if the Board of Zoning Appeals sees fit to grant it, will do, will be limited based upon the application and the business as it's described in the materials. There is, as I appreciate Chairman Whitson pointed out at the very beginning of the public meeting, there is this unfortunate, we only have one definition that could possibly even sort of take in this kind of a use, and that's kennel. And maybe people have immediately jumped to the assumption that by kennel it means a breeding kennel, a boarding kennel, those kinds of things that people, because they fear the number of dogs that will be there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, raises concerns. But that's not the application that you have before you. And there seems to be also maybe a misunderstanding as to how the permitting process and enforcement works. You know, it's not the case that that this planning commission and then the Board of Zoning Appeals can approve, if you see fit, the application as it's described in the materials and then have it morph into something else, a boarding, overnight boarding kennel, a breeding kennel. I would submit that many of the concerns that were raised in the public comments this evening are based on a fear that this is something other than it is. And the materials that you have, the application materials you have, I think very clearly describe the limitations that in fact address or go to ameliorate a lot of the concerns that you heard expressed by some of the neighbors. It is worth bringing the discussion back to the actual standards, the additional standards that we have in the zoning ordinance that pertain to kennels and again, in a way, these aren't, in some ways, applicable to the kind of use that we're talking here, because I really do think they also, when you read them, seem more to be aimed at a breeding operation or a boarding operation rather than dog training that occurs between specific hours of the day, that start in the morning and end in the evening. But without going through them in detail, all the planning commission members have them, I urge you to review them and you'll see that obviously this application amply falls within all of those additional standards. And Ms. Summers has called no attention in her staff report to any concerns about satisfying those. I heard as I sat there this evening, a repeated mention of, this is going on, this is an agricultural property, it's an agricultural property, you shouldn't let this happen on agricultural property. It's worth pointing out that this twenty-two acre property is the remnant of what was a larger piece of land that sat between the Narmada Winery property and the Cabin Lane properties. And in fact, Mr. Parrish, by way of a sale and a boundary line adjustment, sold off to his neighbor. What I would submit was most of the agricultural property on the parish property. And the overhead, the aerial diagram that you had, I think does a good job of making the point, if you expanded that out and saw the, what was the rest of the parish property, which would go off the north side, the upper side of the picture there, you would see that that was where most of the open farm ran, agricultural land, where you could cut hay and grow crops was. And what's left here on the front part of the property is, as you can see, is heavily forested for a large part of it, with a couple of areas tucked along the northern side of it, that you could actually do anything with from an agricultural standpoint. And as Ms. Wagner mentioned to you a few minutes ago, has tried to preserve some agricultural use in that, in that section of the property that is actually on the side of the property that is closest to the Cabin Lane neighbors. And this is something else that bears mentioning, is that in tailoring her application to this property and the situation, she has done her very best to present a plan and proposal that shifts the, this activity as far away from the Cabin Lane residential properties as you possibly could on this property. And put it on the other side, even on the other side of a large tree line that you see there on your diagram. One last comment. Yeah, again, coming back to this recurring theme of it's an agricultural property, it's an agricultural- an agricultural property, it's an agricultural, uh, zoning. Our zoning ordinance permits this activity on agricultural property with the issuance of a special use permit. Uh, if the planning commi-, if the Board of Supervisors, uh, in, in consultation with the input of the Planning Commission, uh, saw fit, uh, to not have this kind of activity at all in the county or at all, uh, in agricultural zoning, it would have been a simple matter, uh, when the current version of our zoning ordinance was enacted, uh, for, for th- those letters SP that appear in this column of the chart, just be removed. But that's not the case. And the fact of the matter is that there are a number of similar, uh, dog-related businesses, uh, that are scattered around the county. Just a very quick informal, uh, search turned up, uh, when, uh, that, uh, that, when we, you took a look at it, uh, turned up four different boarding, uh, grooming, training businesses, uh, in, you know, in, in this county, and of course, a, a large, a commercial veterinary practice, uh, that we all are aware of. All five of those, just in that very informal, quick survey, located in agricultural zoning. So it's fair to say that, that this application before you this evening is not coming in and seeking, uh, to do something extraordinary, uh, in the history of, uh, Rappahannock or in the zoning, uh, ordinance of Rappahannock. Uh, and I urge you to keep, uh, keep that in mind as you consider the application this evening. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful. Okay, with, um, with that, I think we'll, um, I'll turn it over to the members of the Planning Commission. I don't know who wants to get, get us started and invite you to pose questions to Ms. Wagner or Mr. Brown, if you will, um, or Ms. Summers, as the case might be. Ms. Rollin, you want to jump in?
Uh, not especially.
Okay.
Well, uh, I do have a question. Um, the, uh, you know, I, 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 the only things that I think are, I, I appreciate a lot of the concerns, and I think there is some confusion about this application, and, you know, that is not uncommon. But I guess the one thing that I didn't really hear addressed in the, in your discussion, Ms. Wagner, was on, and it got me thinking, I started looking at the application, it wasn't real clear to me. What is the, um, the, the proposed fencing? I see that you have fencing around the work areas, but is there any kind of, is there any kind of peripheral, you know, secondary containment of the animals?
Um, scroll this up. Can you, is that possible? Okay, I guess it doesn't show. Oh, there we go. So the blue areas, the ones that are having fencing, this one is like 75 by 125, I think. This one's 100, 550. Possibly, but the, the lines are there in terms of like the dimensions. Um, so there we go. Good. This neighbor is putting up a fence. The winery has a rickety fence that probably needs replacing, I'm not gonna lie, on the, on the neighborhood side. And then what we're putting is 5.5 feet welded wire, which is a no-climb fencing that dogs can't scale. Um, and it's at a height that most dogs can't jump. So we're gonna have that going along the line with tartar gates with a double gate system, just like they have a dog park so that dogs can't rush in or out. So it's a double gated system to get in. And then the actual fencing is 5 and 1/2.
So, so what about the, that's the, that's the, I forget what you're calling it, the, the yard area or whatever, but is-
So there's an exercise yard and then an agility arena.
But is there anything like from, like this, a dog did kind of escape its owner in the parking lot. Is that a clear shot of the property?
See, they have to be, I mean, they have to be on leash. Parking is right here, so it's a clear shot here or is here to there. So it is fairly close. We do require people on leash. But at the, at the reality is, is if the budget allows it, I would love to eventually put a secondary perimeter fence for safety, just because we are on 211. Um, it just kind of depends on what the budget allows and what safety we need.
Well, and, and it occurs to me, I'll just throw this out there, that if we're talking about, uh, uh, you know, conditions, which is part of our job here, is, is, it seems to me we could contemplate some additional, uh, perimeter, uh, protection, because I don't think I've heard anything otherwise that addresses the prospect of, of a dog kind of getting away. And I do think that is a, a concern of, that's been, that's been raised. So I just share that as an initial observation.
So probably a double fencing would be a good system to have.
Yeah.
What you're suggesting around-
A containment fence that's more of a-
Where B, C, D, and E, so when you pull into the parking lot.
It seems to me that more could be done to do, you know, security for escaping dogs is a pretty good thing.
So a double barrier, yeah. Just like you were saying, a perimeter, uh, that encases everything, in case one got out so that they could go to the neighbor's house.
That's all I have for now.
Ms. Ritter, welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
Um, you're next.
Okay, um, I had a couple of questions. Narmada is not an organic vineyard, is it?
You're welcome, you're welcome to address it if you want.
Organic and-
Do you mean certified organic?
I'm assuming you spray it with pesticides and herbicides.
Try as little as possible, um, to, they have natural possible, but years I've had them, but above getting paid, or she has had to be very limited to the things, plenty of them, to speak of, how she tries to keep it as little as possible.
Just trying to get to the water issue. Um, Ms. Wagner, you have a proposed waste disposal.
Yeah, so the USDA has a really cool booklet actually online that you can download, and that gives you multiple methods that is approved by the USDA on how to deal with waste.
Could you just, yeah, thank you, sorry.
So the USDA has an informational, um, document on their website that you can download, and it gives you various ways of doing waste, um, disposal. I actually chose the litter bin method because it's easiest turned, um, and that the idea is, obviously, the heat from the compost allows, um, everything to break down, and then eventually you can actually use it as a safe compost, um, based on government regulation. So in terms of like concern of, of soil and seepage and all that, like, we do keep a pretty tidy and clean operation, um, in regards to litter pickup. We are pretty strict about that, but primarily, um, we are trying to do something, you know, productive and not to harm the surrounding area by applying that method. Yeah.
Where's it at?
Hmm?
Where's it at?
It's an, it's an aqua seep.
Sorry, could, yeah, yeah, thanks. We'll, we'll ask that question. All right.
Um, then I, I went, uh, to the Mountain View facility, and I talked to the people, some people who lived around there, and honestly, most of them didn't even know when the classes were taking place. So it didn't seem to me that the noise or barking dogs were much of an issue. And my guess is your facility would be taking, um, an equivalent or a similar number of dogs.
Yes, right now, our classes are limited to about five dogs. We're kind of known for having a more like personal approach. We don't do kind of like these, these gigantic group classes like some of the kind of, um, box store training classes do. So we, we mostly work one-on-one with owners, and then we also have small group classes of like five dogs at a time. Um, but yeah, there's always an owner and a person present with the dogs working, the dogs while they're there.
Thank you.
Ms. Ishii.
Thank you. Um, and Ms. Wagner, thank you for yet again, coming before us. And I also would like to welcome Ms. Ritter, who's, um, not to call her out, but our BCA member, welcome, as, as is our ordinance. We have a BCA member at all times, so that's great to have her here. Um, I did have a, a number of thoughts on this, um, given that this is our fourth time of reviewing it, but, um, so, I, the job of our, I mean, this is a, this is a, without doubt, probably a, um, a, a, a good business model for you. Um, excuse me, the, um, and it's probably a good business for, as you say, for many folks. But I think this body, um, you know, while that's of, of interest and, and important, um, our job is to look at whether this fits in an agricultural setting. And so I, I think that, um, for me at least, the question is whether it's compatible, um, with an agricul- this is not an agricultural use of the property per se, it's a commercial use, but it's one, as, as, as your attorney points out, that is, um, is allowed under our ordinance, um, as a special, a special permit. Um, but part of the question is the scale of the use and its impact, and whether it's a, you know, it's gonna affect in a negative way agricultural use of this, this property. And in that context, I do think it's, it's, while not dispositive necessarily, the, the, the concerns of the neighbors are important in that they have bought next to and live next to what they consider an agricultural area. So their concerns, you know, are relevant as well, I think. Um, I think that dog training, uh, is, is, while not a farm production use, um, still can be, if it's a scale and, and design are appropriate, it can be a very appropriate use. I've seen, as, as others have, um, much smaller-scale dog training in a county, and, and it's low impact, um, it's beneficial, um, it's, it really, nobody even knows what's going on most of the time. So, so clearly that potential exists here. Um, but I did have some questions. Um, one, uh, having been, they've brought it up, the use of Cabin Lane, are, are you willing to, would, would there, you have any concerns if this permit said no use of access to Cabin Lane for this business?
Ma'am, to be honest, I have no idea where the Cabin Lane thing comes from. I never wanted access from Cabin Lane. I have a designated driveway. I don't know where that came from. Um, I don't need access from Cabin Lane. I've never requested it. I just want to use the existing driveway.
Okay. Um, also, um, the, uh, you had said in your previous application to us, and I brought this up last time, I think, that, um, that you said you will not be training police dogs, detection dogs, or personal protection dogs, which I think is actually a little bit important, um, because that's a different type of operation. You didn't change your application to include that this time, but that would be one of the conditions I'd like to see included in this. Um, uh, you also stated that you would be asking for special, um, permission for any shows or events there. Um, I, I think that could conceivably be of concern to neighbors as well, if there are gonna be larger outdoor events or shows going on that create more noise and more traffic. So I think, um, there are a number of conditions I would like to see included in this, if, if I were gonna feel comfortable with it. The, one of the big also, uh, concerns that I think I raised last time was, while this property is more attractive in a sense than your prior proposal because of the road access, it has what I consider a, an oddly negative impact in that you've got Narmada right next to it, you're right on the road, and we don't want a commercial alley, as I've said before, you know, starting up along there. When you showed us the overhead, we can see this is an agricultural area, and we want to keep it an agricultural, I, I want to keep it. I think our comprehensive plan wants to keep it an agricultural area. So I think whatever conditions we have in here are really important to, um, making sure the scale would be appropriate and the use would be appropriate. So I would like to see, um, quite a number of conditions, one of which would be that it, whatever you've put in your application becomes part of the permit, with a couple of changes. Um, I would like to see it limited to cut, to 20, be a requirement, not just, um, aspirational what you have in your application right now, that it be limited to 20 customers and cars per day, that it be limited to 20 dogs max at any one time, that there be no overnight boarding, which I think you do have in your application. But still, I'd like to see, um, the existing trees and vegetation. You said you're gonna add some around the perimeter, but that the vegetation that is existing now between your facility and 211, I'd like to see that maintained, so that there's a clear buffer.
And, and I, I agree with you, and that vertical strip there as well.
Yeah, I, so any vegetation that right now is serving as a buffer, uh, yeah, I think that would be important to maintain. Um, no training of police dogs, et cetera. Um, I think you explained to us why your hours of operation are expanded in this proposal greater than your prior proposal, which you said was not that you had planned to train dogs during that. You, what you hoped for was to have it be open so you could work in the office.
Because we're on a main highway, I'm gonna put a gate up, and I don't want people seeing a sign and pulling in randomly. So basically, the hours that I gave you are the hours that the gate will be open. So like whether we have appointments, whether I go to work, whatever, whether I come in early to do work or take care of the animals, those hours are basically the hours where the gate opens or gate closes.
So I would like to see your hours of operation that would be impacting the neighbors.
Our appointments start at 10, last class ends at, starts at 6:30, 7:30.
So you had put in your previous proposal that the hours of operation, I believe, would be, uh, let's see if I can, I think you said 10 to 5 weekdays and 10 to 3 Saturdays?
No, we had it later on the original application.
Oh, well, that's what I had down. But in any event, I think that would be, to me, that would be, uh, appropriate hours of operation because for, for one reason, on, um, when it's in the wintertime, it doesn't mean a lot of lights and so forth for the neighbors. Uh, and, um, and it, you know, if you want to stay in there and work in your office, I don't think that's considered hours of operation.
The majority of our clientele work nine-to-five, so all our group classes tend to be scheduled at 5:30, 6:30, and 7:30, because that's where the majority of our clientele comes and sees us.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, that would have to be thought through, I think. Um, 'cause I, I think the hours of operation are important to the neighbors, I would, I would think.
So they're inside the building, and the building's lit. It's nothing bothering the neighbors.
Are your, all your classes gonna be inside the building?
Um, some inside, some outside, like the agility arenas where we're gonna do the competition stuff, like rally obedience and agility, and then the indoor arenas where we're gonna do our pet dog stuff. Some will be in the air.
But there will be lights shining on the neighbors.
You know, we have dark, we-
No, we have dark sky-approved lighting. We make sure that the lighting fixtures that we want to pick up don't actually produce a lot of outward light.
But if you have, if you have events at 7:30 at night in the winter and it's dark, you're gonna need lights outside.
Sure, sure.
Presumably.
Sure. But we're also on the other side of a tree line.
Okay. Um, I would also like to see, um, and again, this is something that the, uh, BCA does at times, the permits expire upon the sale of the business or the property. I think a lot of attention has been paid to the fact that you are a very responsible, um, operator and business person, and you've given us a lot of assurances about how you yourself would handle it. But I think that these are very large buildings that are actually being put up. Now, they could have other agricultural uses, such as a horse or arena, for example, but they could have some other uses as well. And, and the kind of, a dog operation that brought in a lot of dogs or a lot of, um, activity, um, from other counties could be a very different use of this property than what you're proposing. Um, and then also, of course, the, the other conditions recommended by this, by the staff about that, uh, the bathrooms have to be set up within a year, um, uh, as well. So, and I realize that this sounds like, whoa, this is a whole long list of stuff you're asking for us to do, but you've heard concerns from the neighbors. Um, and I know that, you know, probably in other jurisdictions, maybe we, they wouldn't impose quite as much, but we're not other jurisdictions. We're Rappahannock, and we're trying to keep this rural. So, um, I think it would be important to, to be careful with, with what, uh, what conditions we impose up front. So thank you for the time.
Um, thanks. And, um, before Mr. Shulon jumps in, Ms. Ishii, I don't know, I don't know what way, um, we'll go tonight in terms of our recommendation. Again, it's a recommendation of the Board of Zoning Appeals. We're not approving or disapproving the application here, but, um, uh, before we get there, it sounds like you've put some thought into possible conditions. So you just organize those a little, I, I wrote them down as you're speaking, but maybe organize them and frame them the best you can, so that once we get to a point of maybe making a decision, we at least have those enumerated, and then, um, we can talk to the applicant to see if those would even be acceptable or workable from a, a business standpoint. All right, thanks. Mr. Shulon?
Um, thank you for all that. That knocked off, a lot off of my list. Only thing I would add to that is, um, possibly what you were talking about with the additional fence around the whole system as a secondary barrier to any escapees. Um, as far as smells concerned, I think what smells worse is how this application moved from one location to another, you know, former supervisor's protest at prior meeting. Me, that stinks. Um, aside from that, um, I think Narmada's presence here already opened this gate as a commercial gateway. Um, I didn't realize what kind of impact and how many folks live down Cabin Lane, and I'm feeling The, um, 20 dogs, I think, I, I like that. I think that's where we need to stay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, I was looking at the distances between, I assume that might be your pool there.
Yeah.
Um, it's like almost 900 feet.
And our well is right there.
At the corner by the horse and goats thing?
Where they were.
It's actually just under 1,000 feet from the existing arena building.
Okay. Um, I just think, I'd like to give her a try here at this location. I wish you the best. I hope you can keep the noise down, the smells down, and address the species issue. Although I don't know if that, because I believe in Narmada's complaint, the note there that they said they had dogs there. Um, I don't know if you need additional, um, revenue generating activities, maybe you could host a wedding there or two. That's all I got to say about this, sir.
Could I say one more thing?
Um.
Can I say one more?
Very briefly.
There's a, in the sales contract, there's a first trust and there's a second trust. The second trust, it goes to Chris Parrott. It's a balloon loan. That's a large payment.
Good, thank you.
And you know, if you don't pay on the second.
Yeah, that's where the finance of properties, the property owners concern. Okay, so we're, we're talking about land use and making a decision within what the ordinance tells us to do. Thank you. All right. Um, uh, thanks, uh, Mr. Shulon. Um, Ms. Wagner, I, I just, I have several questions, some of which overlap with others, but maybe it'll give you a chance to expand a little bit. Um, so just to be crystal clear, do you have any plan whatsoever to ever operate a kennel with overnight accommodations for dogs, ever?
One day I dream to be a really cool dog handler, which means going to dog shows, which means I commit my time to the road part-time. Now, I have staff members, or I have a current staff member, I would like to hire another one on eventually, but given my other passion outside of training dogs, which is showing dogs, I'm not able to run a boarding kennel, at least not to the standard that if I ever were to run one, I would want to. I don't live on premise 24/7.
Okay, but my question is on this, on this parcel with.
No, I do not want to run a boarding kennel, not an overnight kennel.
It's not if you want or.
I will not. And I'm happy to make that part of the terms, by the way.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, so where the buildings are grouped on the, I guess it would be the northeast corner of the property, if you were, if you were to stand it, I guess it's C is the training building, is that correct?
Yes.
If you were to s-.
Yes.
Having, having walked the property, when you stand there and look to the southwest, do you see houses?
No.
Or other structures on Cabin Lane at all?
No, you do not. And the best part is the way that the topography of the land works is I'm not quite sure how much of the building you're even going to see from the Narmada tasting room, because the Narmada tasting room is a, is at a lower elevation than where we want to put our building. You may see some of it, don't get me wrong, but it's not going to be up in your face or intrusive.
Okay, and then just to confirm what, um, I, I heard sort of conflicting, um, distances, what's the approximate distance from, um, one of my colleagues noted the swimming pool from, on Cabin Lane, so from C to the swimming pool?
200, 200 to 60 feet from C to the Narmada building.
I'm sorry, for more.
200 to 60 feet.
From C to the Narmada building, he said.
No, I mean from, from Cabin Lane where the, the, just as a reference, because I can.
From C to C.
Yeah.
Is just as about 975.
975, okay. And then the stand of trees to the west of, uh, C, D, and E, are those?
100 to 60 feet from the.
Are those, Ms. Wagner, are those, are those coniferous trees or deciduous trees, meaning, um, do they?
Deciduous.
Okay, so during the wintertime, there's no leaf?
Not right now, no.
Canopy, okay.
I'm happy to buffer it up with some evergreens.
Um, in terms of, I mean, I'm just going to use a highly technical term here, dog poop mitigation?
Yes.
What, what is the, um, can you just, because someone in the, in, in the audience did raise a concern about that, so I just want to follow up. What exactly will this system look like? And then what?
So, I think it's in, it's in the document. It's, it's a compost heap basically, and they have specifications for it that the USDA kind of guides you through, and they actually tell you how to compost the waste so that you can reuse it in flower beds and flower gardens, meaning that it is just like using horse manure or cow manure, um, since you're composting it, that makes it safe.
How's it physically contained?
It's in a wood and wire crate, basically, kind of like people at farms have composting heaps. You use wood, you can use pallets, for instance, with wire on the inside.
And where will this be located?
Um, I was told that the, that if you look at the parcel.
Sure.
I was told that the wind goes this way.
Yeah.
Pull up just.
We're southeast.
No, no.
All right.
Lower right to upper right, upper, or lower left to upper right.
We're primarily southeast.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we'll have to definitely put the compost somewhere in the lower part of the map closer to.
If I may, I think to clarify my question is, you got an issue with compost, then around farms, silage, everything. It doesn't just evaporate into air. When that wire fence gets full, where does it go? If you sit on the ground, it's going.
I was, I was getting there, so my question.
Flower beds.
I'm sorry?
Flower beds.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Flower beds, you can re-compost it and use it in your flower bed.
I know, but the, the question is what are you physically going to do with all the dog poop?
You put it in the composting bin, you compost it, and you reuse it in flower beds.
Okay, are you, are you moving it off the property, selling it?
No, it stays on the property to use.
You're just, you're using your.
As manure, as compost, yeah.
Okay, all right, got it.
Repurpose it, like you do with compost, yeah.
Um, I, I tried to pull up Virginia tax, Virginia tax code because I didn't know the answer to this, but do you, when you charge your clients currently, are you charging them sales tax?
No, because we are, no, because we are service, not a product.
That's what I thought, good. I should know that. Um, so I did have a question about Narmada, so I'm just, I, I think you've already addressed this, but when you came to us, it seemed like Narmada, the Narmada owner being the most directly affected by your property, you came in initially stating that they supported the application. Do you have any idea what's changed other, beyond what, um, the speaker tonight said?
I, I don't know. So the first time I went to, I drop off the leaflets, I spoke to Suda in person. The second time I dropped by to do, um, a wine order, I checked in with them and I asked whether she'd be willing to sign after I gave her the materials, um, to look over based on our plan. And she wasn't in the tasting room at the time, um, and one of her employees was kind enough to call her to check in with her, and I actually left a copy with the signatures with her, they made a photocopy, and, um, they had said that they would be willing to sign it at the time.
Okay.
I, I understand that that has changed now, but.
All right.
At the time.
And then, um, uh, I just wanted to follow up on something Mr. Brown said, that in 17036 of the, um, zoning ordinance, which basically provides, uh, special uses and exceptions for different zoning districts in the county, it's, it is interesting, um, just for everyone's understanding, it is interesting that the zoning ordinance is written in such a way that under commercial, retail, and business uses in a zone agricultural, um, zoning district, the only, the only, um, permitted, special permitted, commercial activities in, in zone ag are kennels, animal hospitals, and veterinary clinics, and farm supply establishments, I think. Um, well, actually, office professional buildings, um, also in there Barber's and Beauty Shop, Barber and Beauty Shop, which is an odd one, and tourist homes, which we hear a lot about in the county, and then finally seasonal wayside stands. So it seems like the spirit of the ordinance, at least as I read it, is that, um, a kennel operation is, in a way, um, close enough to an agricultural use that it doesn't undermine, doesn't undermine from a commercial perspective, sort of an agricultural zone. So it's just interesting that kennel is one of the few, um, special permitted, uh, uses in a zoned ag area, just, that's just an observation. Um, that's all I have right now, I don't know if others have.
Hey, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, office, very thorough. I don't know if Mr. Chairman, if you want to, it looks like.
Oh, sorry.
I'll next one comment on.
Could you come up to the microphone? I, I think this goes to the question about Narmada, so, yeah.
So, uh, through hearing everything, um, I have some answers for some of the questions, like what went on with Suda Patel and the decision. Um, I've been working with her very close, I happen to be that nice gentleman who called her. Um, during that time, she's been going through processing, harvesting, she's over 70 years old, very tired, and she's just really enthusiastic about people pushing for their dreams. Finally, as I brought the paperwork to her again and again, and she, like, you need to be confident in your decisions, um, she took it more seriously, read through everything, put heavy thought into it, and again, um, we wish she did succeed, but she, from a business standpoint, uh, thought that was maybe not the best. And even, I would also like to chime in with the, uh, the sound problem with the other dog kennel. Um, I know which one you're talking about.
Sorry, the sound problem?
Um, dogs barking, all that.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure I heard.
Yeah, sorry. Um, they're surrounded by trees, and from where those buildings are, um, I can throw a, a rock, and there's no trees, so that's part of the issue with that.
Though that is remedial.
I'm sorry?
It's remedial. I mean, it can be fixed.
It could be over time, of course, but, um, I just feel like those are some questions. And, and again, I work very closely with Suda, so if you have any questions about what she's thinking, um, feel free to let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I want to pull two of these threads a little bit further. One of the comments, something that hasn't come up, but in talking about this, is this kind of more commercial, more agricultural, that is a bit of a angels dancing on the heads of pins kind of question, but I do think one of the things that was a consideration for us at, at this site is, is more desirable than others, is the, the road access and the, and the road flow and the, I think it's undeniable that there is a fair amount of vehicular traffic at the Narmada winery, more on the scale of a commercial operation than a typical farming operation, for example. So in terms of the way we think about these things, in terms of impacts through noise, environment, you know, the things that affect neighborhoods, that's the basis by which we sort of are looking at Narmada, or at least I am looking at the Narmada example as sort of already having kind of a, a vehicular traffic that would meet, that this vehicular traffic would be somewhat marginal in comparison. Um, what, what I also wanted to point, ask about, it's a little unclear to me what's going on with the well and septic, and is, is it just a matter of, I mean, there is an existing well and septic, is it, is just a question of.
So right now, the property is under contract, right, pending all the, the county administration stuff. Um, so currently, there is a house on site, it's a two-bedroom dwelling that does have an existing well and septic, um, and if this goes forward, then we'll definitely explore whether or not, distance-wise, and with the drainage field, we'll have it all assessed to see whether or not we can tie an existing building into that. If not, um, like right now, we're training one of the parks that we use a lot, is Spillman Park in Culpeper County, but the majority of the parks don't have bathrooms, um, during the winter. So temporarily, while we're building, we would use a porta potty, porta potty, which the county has approved by the health department, has no impact on, you know, the land or anything. Um, and then, um, we would use that while we build the rest of the facilities, and then pending on whatever they find, tying into the current system or putting in a new system, um, it just gives us time to start, um, accepting clients while figuring out which one is more feasible.
Thank you for that. That, that part, just trying to think of precedent for that. I know we, we talked about this a lot, and there's a bit of a chicken and egg situation there with respect to approvals, but I, I do think it's a, you know, it's another consideration, if that would be a concern, that, you know, we could have that be a little further advanced. Uh, I'm not sure I'm suggesting that, but that does seem a little bit, um, extraordinary. Um, yeah, I, I think otherwise, I just want to be clear also that this question about, you know, what your dreams are about an overnight facility or not, I think Mr. Brown's points need to be well reflected, that, you know, what is ultimately decided by the BZA in terms of any conditions are, are bound in the permit, and, and I certainly think Ms. Ishi's gone a long way in articulating the kinds of things that would be, um, would be helpful. Does seem like there was a lot of consideration here about this being an operation that is not part of what we would be contemplating approving, so, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I did want to ask, so the dog, the dog waste areas, um, I am somewhat familiar with the compost, the, I, I do know that, of course, dog and cat waste have bacteria that horse and goats don't have and, and are more of concern of, and that's legitimate concern. Um, so when you compost, uh, and it, 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 it does it, is, they do also recommend that you not put it on vegetable gardens, is my recalling from that stuff. And so, um, it would, you would want that to be far away from any boundary lines where you're composting and where you're disposing of it as well. Um, so that might be also something to be, to be stated in there where, where that would be located so that it would be sufficiently far from any, either, either the winery or your neighbors, um, because they do have different parasites, as you well know, I'm sure. Um, and, um, let's see if there's anything else in here.
Could, could I, while you're thinking about that, I think on this compost question, what, what is the, okay, so you don't have flower beds, your, the thing fills up, what is the alternative disposal method? Is there a place to take?
There is a company that call, that's called Duty Calls, that will come and pick up your dog poop for you.
Even at the scale you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
That's what I was trying to ask, thank you. I got bogged down in the, the preceding questions, so.
If I may, one last, on the, on the outdoor shows, um, idea, so I, you know, training five dogs at one time is, is what I'm familiar with, with dog training that I've had in dog training facilities in the county that I'm familiar with. If we put you at 20 dogs max, well, if we recommend putting you at 20 dogs max at any one time, 20 dogs is actually a fair, a number of dogs to be around each other. That almost becomes more of an event or a show type thing is what I'm thinking of. And, um, so we certainly, if we, if we limited you, if you were limited to 20 dogs maximum at any one time, um, again, that would assume inside or outside unless, unless it were restricted in some way. Um, so I don't know what you think of that.
Can you please clarify for me, because right now, so right now, my business model, and granted, I do want some wiggle room for expansion, right, states that we see 20 dogs per day over the course of an eight to 10-hour day. Not 20 dogs at any given time, just to clarify for you. Now, do I want to be able to say Melissa teaches one class in the building while I teach a class outside and do agility? Absolutely, but then we'd be looking at 10 dogs at a given time. On average, right now, based on how we're operating, it's 20 dogs throughout the day.
So, I'm just sorry, but in terms of the way we think, so that means you could be, you could operate with a, a maximum of, say, 10 dogs at any given time? Or would that be overly?
So right now, yes, um, with this expansion, that's not how we operate right now, but the expansion would give us the opportunity to say one of us does one class in one portion, like inside the building, the other does agility at the same time outside, and, and yeah, then it would be 10 dogs.
But what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I think, trying to empathize with the neighbors a bit, the, the difference between 10 dogs being there at any one time and 20 dogs being there at any one time is significant.
Sure.
So if, you know, if that's another, I mean, thank you for clarifying that, that 20 that you were looking for is 20 throughout the course of a day, seems to me that if it's 20 throughout the course of a day, max, limiting it to 10 at any one time would be another reasonable way to keep the potential for chaos down.
And multiple owners do also own dogs that can be heard from, from the property and own.
Understand, but it's a, it's a scale and harmony kind of question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which could also be more than 20 dogs.
Well, you could say both. You could say 20 dogs max throughout the day, but 10 dogs max at any one time.
That would give flexibility and both the cumulative and the instantaneous potential for disruption.
Any other general background questions for the applicant?
Well, wait a minute, but if you have two people who are teaching, and you have five of each, and they teach an hour class, and you want to run a few more than two hours.
Well, I think we can ask Ms. Wagner, I mean, what is a, I guess currently, you've described your operations typically 20 dogs a day, right? And you're.
Yeah, right now.
But go, as, as it evolves, what, how do you picture this going in terms of?
So right now, we're looking at, we're doing about four or five private lessons during the day, which would be a single dog, so four or five dogs, and then like two to three group classes. So we're looking at roughly 20 dogs per day, per trainer. So we're looking at roughly 20 dogs per day, per trainer. So since we'd both be working, we'd probably looking at double that, 40 dogs per day for the business in total. Um, that would be coming in and out.
So the restriction should probably read 10 at one time.
Yeah, 10 at one time and then X amount or whatever per day.
Well, so what you're, what, what I just heard you say is you're anticipating a steady 20, instead of 20 dogs maximum throughout the day, you're anticipating 40 dogs maximum throughout the day.
We may go up to 40 dogs if both trainers are teaching a class at the same time, yes. The model that I gave you is based on our current operations, which is what it says.
And this is why it's upon us to think about this? I mean, it ultimately, if we have concerns about the numbers, we set the conditions. She can decide if this business is viable or not.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, I think it's good to try to work this out, but this isn't necessarily a negotiation. So if, if the concern is, and it does seem to me, and thank you for indulging us on this, it seems to me that the maximum at any one time, I would be more sensitive to that than I would be the cumulative over the course of the day. Um, from a, from a standpoint of noise and, and risks and all those kinds of things. Um, but I think this points out that, that the issue that was raised in general, which is, it's lovely to see your typical operation. We don't deal in typical, we deal in bounds. So we would have to, as a condition, I think it's very reasonable for us to think about both a cumulative for a day and a maximum of any one time type of limit.
And I, I guess, this is, this is why I think it's also important to pin down when, when somebody says in an application, you know, I, I hope to keep, you know, to 20 dogs max a day, but when you hear about it, what you mean is 40 dogs max a day. Forty dogs max a day, I agree that 10 dogs at a time is important, but 40 dogs max a day means more cars, more waste, more, you know, just more everything. And I, I, that's a, that's a, to me, a very different application than 20 dogs max throughout the day. So I, I would be comfortable with a 20 dogs max throughout the day as, as a limit on that and 10 dogs max at any one time.
Right, and I think the only, um, the one thing to keep in mind is it's, um, it's private, it's a private road, um, going into the property. So just looking at the general standards in our zoning ordinance for these types of permits, uh, you know, the number of dogs in terms of related traffic, adverse traffic effect on neighbors should, it shouldn't be more adverse from a traffic perspective if you're thinking about effect on neighbors, because they're going in on, where they're not going on cabin lane, we made that clear. They're going in on this private entrance. It's just, um, additional point.
Well, the other thing is it's a, from the question of enforceability, it's much easier to enforce a limit on how many at any given time than it is to keep track of how many came and went through the course of a day.
Right, and I, I agree with your, I mean, what do, we don't know how many, you know, at what point too many dogs in one place makes it an untenable situation. So, um, I mean, that's, that's pretty tough for non-dog people to define. I mean, we're basically, just following the general standards, we're trying to make sure that, um, whatever conditions we place on a permit, if we decide to recommend it for approval, is that, um, there are minimal effects on neighboring properties. And so I like the way you characterize it in terms of number of animals at any one time. I think that goes to noise and just, or however you describe it, chaos or.
Well, and, and again, I think what we're trying to do here is, we have an application. We understand that, and I, we understand the concerns that business is kind of inherently wants to grow. So what we want to do is give you enough room to be successful without giving you so much room to become a more of a nuisance than what we're imagining as we sit here today. I mean, that's, that's, in short, that's what we're trying to do.
I, I would agree with that, but I, again, I, to me, 40 dogs throughout the day, I, and that's part of the concern with this, this whole application as it's, as it's morphing. And, and again, I understand the great business model and the great stuff you bring, is you do have, you have, you have a fairly large facility you're envisioning. And, um, you know, it has a potential to, to grow into something quite large, um, and be a fairly large commercial operation. And I, I don't, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with, um, with a large commercial operation there. I'm, I'm comfortable with something that of a scale that fits in with an agricultural setting, but not a, not a, not a large, you know, suburban or urban training center. I've seen those too, um, and they can be, they can be big and they can be noisy. Um, and that's not what I thought we were dealing with here. So I, I, yeah, I, I think 40 dogs at a maximum is a lot of dogs.
So proposed 20.
A proposed 20.
If you want to, I'm sorry, I, I can't, I mean, this isn't the way this works. I've tried to be pretty flexible. Um, just a reminder, if it's going to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals regardless, and there'll be another public hearing at the Board of Zoning Appeals, okay? So there'll be another opportunity for everyone to provide their comments, but I've tried to be pretty flexible in letting people just fill in information, but we got to draw the line, so thanks. Um, okay, so, um, if you want to take a crack at a motion and we'll see where we end up, MK.
Okay, this is a long motion. The motion would be to approve, recommend approval to the BZA for the permit, for the application as it's presented to us with all the conditions in the application and the updated proposal with the addition of the following. A limit of 20 cars, um, customers per day. Um, 20 dogs maximum throughout the day, 10 dogs max at any one time. And I have these written down, so I can hand them to you. No overnight boarding. Uh, maintain all existing trees, vegetation cover. No training of police detective or personal protection dogs. I would propose that the hours of operation be 10 to 6:30 weekdays and 10 to 3 Saturdays. The permit expires upon sale of the business or the property, uh, along with the other conditions recommended by the staff that are not in conflict with the above, um, as well as adding protective dog fencing around the entire dog training areas, buildings and parking area, and no use of cabin lane for the business.
Thank you for that. Um, I'm almost ready to second, although I feel like the 6:30 bite is a pretty tough one, given what she said about the plan for the operation. Ooh, can we, can we spend a little more time on that, or should we have a second and then discuss it, or what's the?
Go ahead, I mean.
Well.
What do you propose, Darren?
Well, we've spent this much time, let's keep drilling in. So the courses that you described start at 5:30, 6:30 and 7:30 typically, and they run for an hour. So you have, typically would have a course from 7:30.
They're about 45 minutes to an hour in the length. We tell people it's 45 minutes, but that way we have time to answer questions for anybody who has to stay behind after the addresses.
So if we, if, just Ms. Ishi, with your motion, that would limit that window to one of those sessions? If, if they typically, for scheduling purposes, have to be from 5:30 to 6:00. That strikes me as a bit limiting to the business model.
So what would you?
I guess I would like to, I, I, I guess I would like to stick to the, leave the time to the hours as in the, in the application. And the other ones, the other number at it per day and, um, the cumulative number of dogs kind of addresses that question.
So I'm sorry, were those hours again, if you could refer my, I never.
Good question. What, what, what were they, what did it say?
Ms. Wagner, do you want to just tell us what's in your?
It was 10 to 8, wasn't it?
9 to 8.
What was in your application?
10 to 8.
10 to 8, no matter what day, basically.
No, no, no. There was a typo in the original description, which was just.
Yeah, honestly, I worked, and I, uh, just say, and if, I want to get my dog trained.
Um, it's by appointment only 10 a.m. to 8 p.m.
All right, we can say 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. and 10 to 3 on, on Saturdays?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, so Ms. Ishi, you'll amend your motion to reflect that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. With that re, modification, I will second Ms. Ishi's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to send it on the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation for approval with the conditions that Ms. Ishi described. Could I just see them, so everyone can hear them again? I try to keep up, but you talk fast. Um, limit of 20 cars, customers per day, 20 dogs maximum throughout the day, no more than 10 dogs maximum at any one time, no overnight boarding, maintain in good health all existing, um, tree and vegetation cover, no training of police detection or personal protection dogs, hours of operation 10 to 8 on weekdays, 10 to 3 on Saturdays. The permit expires upon sale of business or property. Compliance with all other conditions stated in the application, um, including these conditions that are, are, um, contained in this motion. Other conditions recommended by staff that are not in conflict with everything described above.
I think are the, that's the sewer, that's, that, that would include the sewer one and it overlaps with the, the, uh, it overlaps with the no kennel.
Okay, um, protective dog safe fencing around entire dog training areas, buildings and parking area, and absolutely no use of cabin lane for any business activities. So thanks for organizing that. That made life a lot easier and you wrote it very clearly, so thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion and those conditions? No further discussion, um, we'll go ahead and, and vote on it. Um, this is again, sending to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation for approval. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So again, just for everyone here, you'll have a public hearing at the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so I would recommend that you, you go and speak there, that's the body that'll either approve or deny the permit.
And if nothing else, you at least now have more clarity on what it is you're, you're commenting on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So the Board is only, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, I think, will be, um, next month. So just, it'll be advertised in the paper for a public hearing. Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mike. Okay, um, so, all right, just give a, give everyone a couple of minutes and we'll get our two, our two, uh, recues back, back at the table.
You'll have it.
Why, why did you recuse yourself? What's up? Got it, oh, at the bank, okay. No, it's fine. Okay, uh, we don't have many members of the public left, but we do have a general public comment period. Um, so this is an opportunity for anyone to speak about anything of interest to the Planning Commission. I'll go ahead and open the public comment period. Anyone? Okay, I'll close the public comment period. Thank you. Um, under old business, golf driving ranges, this is a proposed, um, text amendment, the zoning ordinance. Um, we haven't looked at this since last fall. If, uh, Ms. Summers, you could just remind us of how we ended up here and, and where we currently stand.
So, um, initially, there was a request from, um, an applicant for a text amendment, text ordinance. This is actually also on my list of items to review from the board supervisors to the planning commission to address. Um, we have an attached draft that Mr. Curry has worked on. Um, I mean, let me take golf driving ranges, not special exception, an ag area, and then additional changes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know Ms. Ishi, you're, you're, um, you're getting called on a lot tonight, but you had looked at this and you had, um, sent around some proposed changes to the current version of the draft. You want to get us started by just talking through your thinking and, and sort of what you've done with the, the current draft?
Sure, thank you for that. Um, so it's, it's interesting that this has not generated a little bit more public interest. Um, I kind of thought it might, but, uh, again, to me, this is one of those questions about, um, you know, we're opening up an ag area to another recreational, commercial use rather than actual farm production. Um, and, uh, there are reasons why that's, can be a good idea. Um, again, to allow, uh, productive uses of agricultural lands that if those uses are low impact and pretty much maintain the agricultural rural feel, um, this has the potential to do that. Um, uh, I think Mr. Curry started us off with, you know, some, some thoughts. I, I don't think his, um, suggestions went far enough. If, 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 if one were to open this ag lands to these, um, golf driving ranges or limited golf driving ranges, I would like to see a number of other conditions, um, imposed. Um, so I would agree with everything he had, except that I would add, um, that no structure shall exceed 10 feet as he has it, but also be limited to 1,200 square feet in size. Um, I would change the minimum lot size to be 50 acres instead of 25, although I, you know, you could go either way on that. But, but I would like to see a footprint limitation, so it's not, it's not just sprawling all over the place. So you limit it to 10 contiguous acres total for the footprint of the fairways, greens and structures. Um, I have here that the applicant should submit groundwater modeling, uh, language that was taken out of our ordinance, uh, for golf courses, but Mr. Curry had suggested just say no irrigation, um, or use of pesticides or herbicides. That is also a possibility. Um, uh, I would say that, um, fairways, greens or other hitting structures, I think we need to have a pretty generous, um, setback for that. And the reason I suggest that is I did look into a little bit, I am not a golfer myself, um, so I, I don't really know the workability of some of these things I've suggested. But there is, for example, a limited golf, I mean, a golf driving range up in Alexandria that is being sued by the neighbors. They have a 450-foot fence, but the golf, golfers keep going over it and hitting the church members on the head and hitting their cars. And so they're suing as a public nuisance. So I think that sounds like they can at least go 450 feet, and so we should consider having, um, strong setbacks on that. So I have put, suggested 500 feet setbacks unless there is a, um, a professional, uh, demonstration by a professional that, um, a lesser standard would be more protective of public safety. Um, I would say no amplified sound shall be allowed and no food sales or commercial entertainment shall be allowed. Um, that's also because on some of these golf driving ranges, that is part of the huge draw is, you know, many, many floor buildings full of video arcade games and such. Um, so I don't think that's what we would be looking to see in our ag lands here. Um, so, uh, so I would like to see, you know, something, as I said, more, more intense than what Mr. Curry had, had helpfully suggested. Um, and so these are some proposals I, I, I kind of lay out. I also think as while we're at it, if we did do anything, we should consider the fact that under our cor, current ordinance, um, golf courses are allowed as part of a country club on, uh, ag lands and golf driving ranges are allowed in highway, commercial and general commercial areas. And we might want to consider increasing those setbacks for those areas as well, because while those setbacks may fit other counties, they're not actually very big setbacks, they're like 150 feet or 200 feet. So that's, that's not a very large setback for hitting golf balls. And we also might want to consider whether golf driving ranges likewise should have, since they're already allowed in highway, commercial and, um, commercial general, whether there should be the use of irrigation and herbicides and pesticides or some hydrogeologic study on, on use of water. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Thanks for putting all that effort into it. Um, anyone else want to, want to weigh in on the current draft, as we have it at some point?
Have we have it, or is it, or including her suggestions?
Well, no, we have, we have the existing draft that we started to look at last fall. And, and then Ms. Ishi just made some additional suggestions on how that, what she would like to see in. what she would like to see and what we would send for a public hearing.
I would like to see, um, counties somehow know that, um, you know, come out with rainbow stew. We can always get a rainbow stew every day and have everything we always want. Now, in terms of this water and pesticide use, right now, all of the ag land, all the conservation land in, in county, you can put as much fertilizer on it. You can put as much pesticides on it. You can irrigate it all you want to. And then there's no regulations by the county to, to say you can't do it. Now, if you, uh, damage the stream or something, you may have some issues there. But right now, if a farmer wants to put on 300 pounds of nitrogen, 200 pounds of phosphate, 200 pounds of potash, he can do whatever he wants. So, to, to go and say that if somebody is using 10 acres of land out of, uh, a 25-acre parcel, they can put 100 pounds of nitrogen on that property, I think is being, um, a little bit far reaching. I think you're taking away some property rights there. Uh, and also to say that you have to have 500-foot setbacks around the entire property, that's crazy. That is a tremendous amount of land that is being set aside that is not necessary. When we did the, uh, golf course in Sperryville, we had two concerns up there. And that was the groundwater usage and also we had concerns of golf balls hit 211. Okay? And the golf balls was one of my issues. And, uh, Mr. Miller had a consultant, a young guy, very analytical. He was into golf courses. He looked at it. He tweaked one course, uh, up there and moved it a little bit. And I had my doubts on whether or not that was gonna be sufficient or not, but I have not seen a golf ball on 211.
I've, I've come close.
I'm sorry. I, I've hit one onto 211, so.
You hit one on 211?
At least.
So, you must be one of those odd balls.
Just, just to be, just to be transparent.
So, you know, to, to do an ordinance that we're talking about here tonight with these proposed changes is, is excessive. There's been, there was a golf course proposed in the 1980s in Woodville on 522. Uh, it was turned down and I was concerned about groundwater there. The next one was the Millers and we worked on that. And the concern there was the usage of irrigation. And it turned out there was 1.2 acres up there on that golf course that was gonna be irrigated. And, and if there was a potential, I think, to build 21 houses up there. And the potential for the water usage by the houses, the people watering the yard, doing their gardens, doing their cars, far exceeded the seasonal water in 1.2 acres of greens. So, you know, you have this benign use that, uh, we're talking about now with our zoning. It's not gonna be a vast amount of people coming into this county. Uh, the present golf course, we watched that, how it has slowly got some legs under it. Is it, uh, is it, uh, you know, runaway profitable? I don't know. I've got my doubts, but it's surviving. So, you know, this is a modest use. I think Mr. Curry gave us some recommendations here that was reasonable. You know, we upped it to 25 acres. Uh, we, we addressed the height of the building. The square footage is okay. But all these other things are excessive. I think a property owner has a property rights. And I think what we're doing here is just a mass surgery that is not necessary. You're creating something that's an overkill.
What about no food sales or commercial entertainment?
And amplified sound.
Well, you know, uh, if he comes in there, if he's having 25 guys hitting balls, do we allow him to have a barbecue grill? Do we have, do we allow a food truck to come in? Like, like that, that's permanently at the brewery, pantry, down the road? Do we let them sell hamburgers there for two hours while they hit balls and then take the food truck out? I mean, is that reasonable? It could be, could not be. I'm, I'm, I'm open on that. But, you know, we set a permanent structure of 1,200 square feet, 10-foot height. That's all they can have, whatever size, uh, driving range that they, that they have proposing. And I think the size of the structure is gonna probably limit in great expansion of this land. So, I, I think we need to keep it simple for people to understand it and, and not go for this kill. I don't know. I haven't sat down and computed, if you did 500-foot setbacks around a whole piece of land and then put a piece of land in the middle that could be used as your golf course. I mean, that's a tremendous amount of land that you're allocating there as a buffer. So, that's my thoughts.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to pick up on that. To me, the, the, um, receptive, some of Mr. Henry's arguments about some of these restrictions, uh, but I do feel like the structure being no more than 1,200 square feet, no amplified music, and, um, I do think the, the, the food sales and commercial entertainment is taking it into another area. I mean, what we're talking about here is a very limited golf hitting operation. Uh, you know, if you start having it be, uh, you know, allowing food and other things, it seems to me that, that, that the food selling dog, tail could wag the golf ball hitting dog in a way that we wouldn't want. So, to me, of the additions that Ms. Ishi pointed out, I think her first and her last two, to me, I would certainly support. The other ones, I'm, I'm certainly, uh, you know, I'm less, I'm less decided on those.
Okay. Anyone else?
By amplified sound, are you talking about having a band, live music or DJ? Or are we talking about little wireless speakers that you hang from your golf bag that you play through your, your phone?
Well, I don't think anybody's gonna go in and regulate that, but I, I do think, I'm, I'm thinking amplified music because a lot of these places have that, have that, that's part of the thing, speakers. Or it can be music or it couldn't be, um, you know, if they're having a.
So, they're not supplying the amplified sound?
Right. That's what I meant by that.
Okay. It wasn't, wouldn't necessarily limit an individual golfer bringing his little speaker?
No, no.
Um, a 1,200-square-foot building with a 10-foot maximum height, what's this building for?
Storage.
I mean, what are we storing?
It's just shelter for shade.
Mower, ball retrieving equipment.
What about a pre-existing building? Does that matter? Let me understand if you're building a new thing, being a sizable lot, a tractor, a 10-foot roof. But is that high enough?
Yeah, I'm getting one tomorrow.
Come measure it.
I'll do a 100-horse car on tractor.
I just care if it's.
If you look at what's up in Sperryville right now, I don't know how it happened, but there's a shed there now. Down in the field and that's pretty much, I don't think it touches 1,200 square feet, but it might, but it's, it's there.
It's more just like a, a roof with no sides on it.
Yeah.
I don't know what you call that. It's almost like a.
Shelter.
Yeah, like a, um.
It's not something for golfers to drive balls under. It's for somebody to sit there and sell buckets of balls to hit somebody.
Someone that you can sit there in the shade while, while somebody else hits the ball.
Yeah.
Can I ask, when you're smoking, you hit the ball, goes down the fairway and then do you have to go collect it?
No, I mean, it's a driver. Whoever owns it takes a tractor on the way to pick some up.
I was just wondering about if they would want, is there ever netting at that end?
Uh, you mean on the, the far side where you're hitting? I mean, I think with the, with the acres that are, it's a 25-acre minimum in this draft. I don't, I mean, the whole idea is that's a big enough parcel to have a driver without having nets. And like, like Al said, when they approved the golf course, they tweaked one fairway because it's right next to 211. We're talking about a big, open, empty field and people hitting golf balls in it.
In one direction.
In one direction, right.
Football and one direction.
That's a key thing too. We don't need a 500-foot setback against the road. We're hitting out in the dead, open space.
Oh, keep in mind, this would also require, sorry, Mr. Henry, this would, this would, these would be the minimum additional requirements, but this would still require a special.
Exception.
Exception permit. So, we, we would still have access to the general standards to apply additional conditions that might apply to a particular parcel.
Yep. This is just, we're basically making a text amendment to the ordinance.
Setting the framework.
Yep. And then, um, so, once we are comfortable that, or we reach a consensus on what the text amendment should look like, we can schedule a public hearing. So, we, I don't know if anyone wants to move us forward in that regard tonight.
With this 500-foot setback, what's been put in Sperryville already could not get approved.
That's right. And, and, and I, I, I mean, I hear people's points on the setbacks. The setbacks, you know, I, I, I base those on reading articles of what problems were found at golf driving ranges. And since they had 400-foot nets and they were flying over those. Um, I will say that, uh, living as close to the driving range in Sperryville as I do, I, I, I have not found it problematic, but I do know that the neighbors tell me there are golf balls all the time in their yards. Um, and.
You can find golf balls in the Shandover National Park.
Probably so. That's right. And I also know that my brother, for example, paid a lot of money to live right on a golf course that's 10 feet from, from where things are being hit. Um, but, uh, so I, you know, I don't know really the appropriate setback, to be honest. And, and, and I, I don't know what, what the right point is there. But, uh, but I do think that, um, what, whatever the setbacks may be for Alexandria, you know, I, I'm envisioning this at least as being a very low impact to no impact use on agricultural lands and, and the neighbors, because right now, you, you can't have these in agricultural lands and we don't have to approve that. Um, so if we do, you know, we'd like for it to be, I, I think it should be a low impact, really low impact use, whatever, whatever we decide would be the appropriate setbacks. But, um, in terms of irrigation, I do, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Henry, you were there with the, um, with the golf course on Sperryville. I do think that, you know, water uses of golf courses is one of those things that, that always are problematic for, for people. So, again, I don't personally know the, exactly what you would say. Mr. Curry had suggested no irrigation. Um, I think that would take away a lot of people's concerns, uh, when these things do come up. Um, and, and, you know, I know Mr. Miller did not have irrigation on his golf driving range there. It was just a field. He just, you know, it's different from a golf course, as I understand it at least. So, that was a, that was a reasoning behind that.
Yep. What, what is, do you need, do you need irrigation?
Well, not typically. I mean, irrigation, I mean, and I'm no expert on this, but, you know, the issue with the irrigation at the, the course was really about the greens. The greens require care. Typically, on the driving range, you don't have greens. You're, you're lacking it and.
It's a field.
You don't have traffic over here. It's space.
Right. You don't, you're not driving out there except your horse.
So, just to move this forward, it sounds like, um, Mr. Henry's okay with the, um, current draft that we have and that, um, Ms. Ishi's put forward some additional, um, restrictions, definitions, setback, um, irrigation, um, hydrogeology, hydro, hydrology studies. And I think, Mr. Light, you said that you, you could accept her, the first and the last of her additional.
Last two.
The last two. I thought you said the first. Sorry.
The first one and the last two. There were, there are no structure bigger than 1,200 square feet, although I think, uh, Mr. Shuland raises a good point. It, it's really about, you know, what we're, it, it, would you rule this thing out? If it already had a barn or a garage that was bigger, that does seem a little, uh, onerous. Uh, but the, the two that are, that I think are most appropriate are the no amplified mute, sound and the no food sales or commercial entertainment.
I, I don't have any problem with, with the food sales and, and amplified music. You know, I thought the way this thing was going was that we were gonna have a very simple ordinance. Basically, you have a driving range and you can't have anything there but a 1,200-square-foot shed. I thought it was gonna be that simple. You have a site size on it and it was gonna be done. And, you know, when we worked on the, uh, golf course there, I don't know, 15 years ago, everybody said, well, what's it gonna be after the golf course closes? And I said, hey, it can be a hay field or pasture. You can put a fence around it and graze it and don't do anything to it. And same way with here. I mean, when there's no longer a driving range, you can leave the shed there and let the cows eat.
Yep.
So, it's, this is about as low impact.
Yeah.
Uh, as you can have.
So.
I have a few thoughts that I'd like to just throw out.
Yeah.
Um, since this is in an ag area, uh, since it's in ag areas, uh, it could be pretty much anywhere in the county. Uh, should we be talking about, uh, we're, we're gonna need parking? You know, if you've got 20 golfers there, you're gonna have anywhere from 12 to 20 cars. Um, you'd want that, I would think to be a gravel lot, but, uh, I would think you'd want it screened in some fashion, uh, if you're going to have a large parking lot.
I think, and I think because, as it was pointed out, in order, in order for this to be permitted, it requires a special exception permit. So, we're talking again about, um, a text amendment to the ordinance. And I think what you're describing, kind of like we just had a discussion tonight on the dog training facility, those could be conditions attached to the permit.
Right, right. And I think that, uh, you know, for instance, at, uh, South Wales, they have, uh, it's a little, they just have some posts. They're different colors or maybe a couple of lines around them, like, like lighthouses that show you your different distances. They don't have songs, 50, 100 and all that stuff out there. Um, you could have, I think it should have a putting green allowed. I don't see why not. Um, the, um, I'm thinking, I don't know how they're gonna collect, get paid or where somebody's gonna sit to get paid, but, uh, I wouldn't think there would be a pro shop or sales. So.
That's a good point there, having whether in that 1,200-square-foot building, are you allowing commercial sales?
Right.
Getting your clubs re-gripped or buy a new bag or something like that.
Right. So, I think, um, I think you could have a lot, less of a, of a setback. Like, I, I had originally thought maybe 200 feet. I don't know. Something on the sides, uh, at least 200 feet from the road. Uh, I think we're trying to keep it so if you're driving through an agricultural area, you don't see.
Right.
30 cars parked along the rail every time you go by.
Yeah, I think it, it's a low impact use of a field, basically, which is what Mr. Henry was getting at. And, um, if we, if we sort of stake this out, um, and advertise it, then obviously we'll hear from people with an interest in driving ranges and we'll have a chance, I think, to, um, send something on to the Board of Supervisors eventually and, and it can be further tweaked, so.
I, I like the idea of, um, going with Mr. Curry's and keeping in mind Ms. Ishi's suggestions, but putting forth the old one for public comment to get more comments 'cause I'm sure these will get brought in to follow as well.
No, I, I, I mean, we could do it that way. Um, I, I do think some sort of setback, he doesn't have any setbacks in here. Um, does he? I don't believe so. I think I added those in. Uh, so I, I think some sort of setbacks would probably make sense, but.
What are, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead here and try to make a motion that we, um, post, make the text amendment, starting with Mr. Curry's draft and adding a requirement that no structure be larger than 1,200 square feet, that there be no amplified sound and no commercial sales or commerc-, uh, no, no, sorry, no, no food sales or commercial entertainment. And those would be the only requirements that we put out and these other items could be taken into account in other ways. So, I move with that it's the original plus those, those three.
And to schedule a public hearing.
And to schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
No, no screening of parking?
I think that's too, too, if, if we do it at this stage, it's too vague. And we'll have a shot at that when we actually get a special permit to look at the scale and the orientation and that, that's where we would deal with screening and buffers and the like.
Yeah, this is more land use ordinance.
I feel that that, this gets us over the minimum and then gets us to the point where, from there, it's, it's very site-specific.
Okay, well said. Okay, that's the motion. Anyone wish to second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Henry's seconded. Any further discussion? And again, it's adopting the first and the last two of Ms. Ishi's additions. So, no structure greater than 1,200 square feet, no, no sound, no amplified sound, no food, commercial sales, I think.
No food or commercial, well, commercial entertainment. But to Mr. Shuland's point, selling, you know, golf clubs and other things, that would, that would not be a driving range use. That would be a retail or use. So, I, I think that would be addressed. So, I, I think the commercial entertain, I think the no food sales or commercial entertainment is reasonable, although, of course, what's the definition of commercial entertainment?
Okay.
I think we know what we're trying to do there. So, that gives us something to, to, uh, point out. What we're trying to do. I think we know what we're trying to do there. So that gives us something to, to, uh, point out. What we're trying to do here is keep a Rappahannock style riding range.
Low key. Okay.
What about the 20, 10 acres? Is that, should that be?
No, it's, it's, it's been changed to 25.
Okay, great.
Yep, in the draft.
Shouldn't that be 25? Right.
Yep.
What, what's 25?
I think I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. No, it's 10.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You're right. My fault. Sorry.
What, what are you looking at?
Well, I wanted to change the minimum lot requirement to 25.
Yeah, it is. Misread, it is. Under additional standards.
25 right now.
It's 20, it's 25. Sorry, my fault.
10's for the commercial.
Then you might go to 50 first.
Okay, okay.
Additional standards for limited golf driving areas, minimum lot size requirement shall be 25. So these are additional standards as much. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I get the point of moving this forward for public hearing. I, I still think setbacks ought to be in there. So, yeah, I, 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 I wish we would, um, address those. Um, but, yeah.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor to move it on to a public hearing in the form that we've just discussed, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
I'll oppose it.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Did you get all of that? Great. Thanks. All right. This is one, we're standing here with one of our longer meetings in a long time. So, um, so Berkeley.
You need a chairman.
Too late, too late. Um, all right. So on the Berkeley group front, um, in fact, we have scheduled, Mr. Curry and I have scheduled next week and I'd invite, we could have one other person from the planning commission if you were avail, available, uh, Mr. Light or someone else. We're going to have a kickoff planning call with the Berkeley group. And this is to, um, move forward on what they call their diagnostic review of the zoning and and subdivision ordinances. So that's, that's going to happen, I think. We just confirmed it today. Um, it's strangely, their emails to us went to spam, so we lost a few days. But, um, I believe it'll be next week. Uh, just give me a minute here. Um, the 26th, so we, from today, and it's either going to be at 10 a.m. or 2:30 p.m. And I'm sure it'll be by WebEx Zoom or Microsoft, whatever that's called, meetings. So, um, I'll confer with Mr. Light if you want to join it and.
I would be glad to. I do, I could do the morning times.
Okay. And then, um, shortly thereafter, we'll, we'll have a clear idea of what we're going to tackle next. So thank you for your patience as we've kind of worked all that out. And then.
Mr. Curry, on that point, um, first of all, thank you very much for getting that pulled together. Um, I, I just wanted to raise the question of whether, I know when, um, in, in, in days of yore, uh, when they worked on, um, ordinance changes like stormwater management, um, when they would sit down with folks like the Berkeley group, uh, they would go ahead and advertise, they being John McCarthy at the time, would advertise that as a, as a public thing. And then any member of the planning commission or the public who wanted to listen in or be part of that discussion could do so. Um, I don't, I think that might be something worth considering. Um, maybe not on this initial one, but moving forward on.
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry.
I agree with you at some point.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, once, once we kind of lay out the work plan, everything is going to be at a work session or, or during a regular planning commission meeting. And Mr. Kohler made the point to me that, um, you know, we, we probably need to employ more work sessions. I think, I think we can all agree the sign words work session was really useful. And so once, once we kind of wrap our head around the role of the Berkeley group and advising us and focusing on us where, where, what we need to clean up, we'll schedule work sessions and they'll be a part of it. Um, and we'll be sure to budget for that. So I think it, once we get going, for, for certain, it'll all be sort of public meeting based.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, and then I think all we really need to say on the draft sign ordinance, we all have a, our own deadline of the 9th of February. So just, um, again, if, print it out and make handwritten notations or take the draft ordinance and, um, a soft copy and make your edits and track changes. And if you don't want to wear out your home printer, let Michelle Summers know. She can print out a copy for you, um, and, and you can pick it up. I'll probably work on a hard copy, but then, um, if everyone could just get it to Mr. Curry by the end of the day on the 9th, that would be great to give him a chance to kind of, um, align all of our comments in a, in a cogent way before our next meeting in February. So thanks again, everyone, for coming out for that work session and all of your energy and input on the draft sign ordinance. Um, I think that's it, unless anyone else has anything else. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Oh, wow. Okay. Ms. Ishi, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks a lot.